Okay, we're back to approvals. We are looking at action summaries from Wednesday, June 2, 2021. May I have a motion to approve the action summary?
Yeah, I don't know.
Why did you end your session?
Because I was not on the same page you are.
I was on current items. You were on agenda.
Yeah, in any case.
This is why we can't have nice things. There you go. Get a log record. Do you need your daughter to log you into Netflix?
No.
Can we go old school manual voting?
I think so.
Kevin Cross has moved. Don Porter has seconded. Any opposition to approving the motion on the floor? Seeing and hearing none, the motion passes. Next, we'll turn our attention to the minutes from June 2, 2021. May I have a motion to approve the minutes as drafted? Kevin Cross has moved to approve the minutes, and they have been seconded by Valerie Ritz. Are there any items that need correction or changes? Yes. Seeing and hearing none, is there any opposition to approving the minutes as drafted? Seeing no opposition, the motion passes. Next, we'll turn our attention to special order of business. We need to hear disclosures from our board members. Yes.
Request to speak, Jenna Wilson.
Jenna, go ahead.
Okay, so I can't, oh, now I see it here. For case number S12612, that was discussed on July 7th, or no, is it July 7th? Postponed from July's, June is, okay. That's what I thought it was, June 2nd. It does say postponed from July 7th on the agenda. Because we didn't have a meeting, right? So that's just what it was. Anyways, I was not present on June 2 for the discussion, but I did listen to the discussion and the audio and the video today, so I feel comfortable participating if the board so chooses.
Thank you, and I don't think we need a vote on that. It's just an item of disclosure, so you're free to participate. And any other disclosures?
Permission to speak?
Yes.
I also was absent on the June 2 meeting in regards to S12612. However, I did listen to the recording and watch the video, and I'm comfortable to participate.
Thank you, Karen McGilbray, and you're free to participate in that as well. Are there any other disclosures on, from any other board members? Seeing and hearing none, we'll next turn to informational items. They have a motion to approve the informational items from June 1, June 7, June 14, June 21, June 28, July 8, July 16, and the revision on July 19, 2021. Informational items recited in the record. We'll now turn to the consent agenda. One item there, the approval of case S12612. Have a motion to approve the consent agenda. The consent agenda has been moved by Jenna Wilson and seconded by Don Porter. Actually... Is there anyone who wants to pull any of the items from the consent agenda, there being one item, for discussion?
I don't have any item pulled, but on today's agenda, I did notice that on case, it looks like S12608KG. I don't know if we need to correct that, but it says the petitioner, it says Bridget and Amy Affetit, I apologize, Affetit, I'm not sure, but I don't think it's supposed to be Amy. I'm supposed to think it's supposed to be Jamie. We've got a, we've got a petitioner name that's spelt wrong on the agenda just for house cleaning.
All right, we can get there. For now, is there any call for the item to be pulled from the consent agenda to have it discussed? Seeing and hearing none. Is there any opposition to approving the consent agenda? Seeing no opposition, the consent agenda passes. We'll now turn our attention to new business case S12608. The Bridger and Amy Affetit? It should be Jamie. And I think it's only incorrect on the agenda, not on the application. With that, may we have staff's presentation?
Thank you, Chair. This is a request to remove plat note titled Temporary Open Space and On-Site Sewer System Easement from plat 76-7. This plat note is not necessary because Lot 10A has an existing permitted septic system, and connection to public services on both lots is unlikely. Removal of this plat note will not remove the requirement to obtain the required permits for an onsite septic system for Lot 10B. Per AMC 2103-200G9, the following standards must be met. Standard A is met. Conditions that require the plat note have changed because of the enhanced onsite septic engineering and design. At the time of this plat, it was a concern that both lots would not be able to support independent septic systems. It is unlikely that this area will ever be serviced by public sewer and water, and improvements on both lots can accommodate two independent septic systems without the need of this easement. The applicant will be required to get a permitted septic system that is appropriate for this lot size. Standard B is met. Removal of this plat note will not have a negative effect on the neighboring properties, and the adjacent Lot 10A has an existing septic system. None of the reviewing agencies, including onsite water and wastewater, have any objection to the removal of this plat note. A condition of approval is to obtain a letter of non-objection from the owner of Lot 10A, since their access to Lot 10B will be affected by this plat note removal. Standard C is met. Plat 76-7 would continue to meet the approval criteria for subdivisions in subsection 2103-200C9. Therefore, the planning department recommends approval of removing this plat note from plat 76-7, subject to the conditions found on page 3. Thank you.
Thank you. Does the board have any questions of staff? Seeing and hearing none, do we have petitioner's representative here?
Yes, Bridger Offit, here, the owner of the property, and I agree with the department's recommendation to remove this plat note.
Thank you, and does the board have any questions of Jeffrey Offrit? Not at this time. You have nine minutes and 53 seconds in rebuttal. Do we have any members of public that wish to be heard on this matter tonight? And we have no one scheduled on the overhead. Seeing and hearing none. You have nine minutes and 53 seconds in rebuttal. You're free to use now. Thank you. And do we have any questions from the board? Seeing and hearing none. We will next, the matter now rests with the board. May I have a motion to approve the request to remove the restrictive plat note titled Temporary Open Space and On-Site Sewer System, subject to conditions A and B? Kevin Cross has moved, and the motion has been seconded by Jenna Wilson. Kevin, would you like to state your motion?
Yes, regarding case S12608, Sunday Lake subdivision, block 2, Lot 10B. I move to approve the request to remove this restrictive plat note titled Temporary Open Space on On-Site's Water System Easement, subjects to A, B, A and B.
Thank you. And I think that was onsite sewer system.
Oh, thank you, I apologize.
That's fine.
On-site sewer system easement.
And that motion has been seconded. Did you want to speak to your motion?
Yeah, there are three criteria by which an individual can remove the restrictive plat note. Those three conditions are listed on page 2 and 3, which the petitioner has met all three criteria additionally, and we've seen this in the past, that in the last about seven to 10 years, there's been significant advancements to onsite septic systems and sewer systems, and a lot of the restrictive plat notes that were put in the time that this plat was created are no longer applicable, so I move to approve.
Thank you. Are there any other findings from other board members? The additional finding I'd make is that the fact that they have a operating septic system on both lots A and B now make it clearly evident that it is no longer necessary to have the plat note, and the contingency that existed at the time is no longer applicable, and I'll be voting in favor. Does that bring up any other findings? Seeing and hearing none, we'll take the call to vote on this matter. And the motion has passed unanimously. We'll next turn our attention to Arctic Corp. May we have a motion, may we have staff's presentation of case S12615, Arctic Corp?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So this is a request to vacate a 60-foot public on the western property brownie of tract A1 that was dedicated when the Adamsville subdivision was originally subdivided in 1988. The easement is 60 feet wide and accessed through the original tract A2 and D. All those tracts have been developed and have dedicated right-of-way access. Tract A1 has direct access to DeBar Road and optional East 12th Avenue. No municipal reviewing agencies had objections to the proposed vacation. In the matters of the vacation, staff finds condition 1 has been met. The public use easement is surplus to current and future public needs. The easement is not needed to provide access to any surrounding lot, or any lot surrounding tract A1. All the surrounding tracts and lots have access and fully developed right-of-way. The traffic department states in their comments that they have no objections to the vacation. In the matter of condition 2, it's not part of the official streets and highways plan. Condition 3 has been met. The public use easement is in excess of municipal need because it is surrounded by property that is accessed from other dedicated rights-of-way, and the subject is not located on the half-mile grid. Condition 4 has been met. This section of public use easement was never constructed and does not facilitate connectivity to the budding streets or DeBar Road. The public use easement is not needed for any existing or planned public streets. Condition 5 has been met. This vacation will not have any impact on traffic circulation and is not part of the official streets and highways plan. Condition number 6 has been met. The vacation will not result in realignment of an existing right-of-way and does not impact existing traffic circulation. Future connections possible from 12th Avenue to DeBar Road will provide any development connections within the, for future development. So agencies have expressed no objection to the request to vacate the public use easement. The utility companies will have the opportunity to review the proposed plat and request easements as necessary, and therefore, staff believes that the public use easement is in excess of municipal need and recommends approvals as vacation and plat, subject to conditions 4 and 5, found on the staff packet. However, staff is requesting to make one item. It's B2, to, instead of dedicate, we're just going to say resolve with private development. The need to provide a 50-foot radius temporary turnaround easement at East 12th Avenue. So in the comments, traffic didn't request any temporary turnaround easement. Private development did. However, private development, not knowing what the development, future of it is, they just kind of look at it in a bubble. They looked at that 12th Avenue and said, okay, we'll just do a temporary turnaround because that is what accesses the property. However, that would put a pretty significant encumbrance of a 50-foot radius on the 12th Avenue. So making a resolve comment gives the surveyor and the developer a chance to talk to private development and explain kind of what their development plan is, talk with fire, and see if they're, maybe they're going to put a fire gate there, I'm not real sure, but that'll kind of clean it up with, as far as not encumbering the property. That's it. Staff's happy to answer any questions they have, you may have. It is a vacation, and it is the plat, and that's all I have.
And you wanted to have that resolved with, which agency, which department?
Resolve with private development.
Thank you. Go ahead, Kevin.
That's, that's an amendment to, B2, yes, remove dedicate with resolve with private development.
Does that raise any other questions for any of the board members? Thank you, and do we have petitioner's representative?
Can you push the? Microphone button?
Should light up, kind of like?
There we go. Good evening, my name is Brad Rinke. I work for Bell Associates. I'm a licensed land surveyor, and I'm the senior survey manager at Bell. I'm here tonight representing the owners, Arctic Corp, but the owners are both here, and they can answer any questions you might have for them. I wanted to thank staff for their comprehensive report. I'm not going to go through it step by step as they already have, but I did have just a few things that I, that I wanted to add. This replat is part of a larger project to redevelop this area. It includes a rezone and an amendment to the comprehensive plan, and both of those have been approved by the Planning and Zoning Commission already. This larger project allows a mixed land use and some residential, so it still kind of withhold that, or holds that residential intent of the initial zoning. It's clear to the, to the planning staff, along with the community and the owners, that lately, I'd like to see this area, that's really been left over from the 70s, redevelop, so now there's enough opportunity to do that. There were several community council meetings that we attended via Skype, and we did come to a conclusion, lots of discussion, but finally got a letter of support of the project, and everybody in the community council was, was on board. We do accept the department's recommendations, however, I don't see a need for the dedication at all. If you look at your, the preliminary plat, and you can see where 12th Avenue comes in from the side. I think their concern was about conductivity, which it usually always is, but there's nothing to connect to on the other side. In fact, when, when that property to the west was replatted here a few years ago, they actually vacated another public use easement there. So there's, there's no reason to, to go there. There's no right-of-way that it can, then it can connect to at all. It will provide an access point for the development, but there's no need to encumber that land with a 50-foot turnaround, because there's, there's no need for it. So we would request that that condition actually be removed. Other than that, I'll answer any questions.
Is the development you're planning on having, going to enter the property at 12th?
From DeBar, primarily.
From DeBar. And is it, so 12th Avenue won't access anything inside the premises of this lot?
The final development of the property is not finalized, but I'm, I'm assuming that it will use that as an access point to that.
And will it end in a dead end or a through street?
There's no, you mean through street to, to what?
To DeBar, through the development.
Oh, I see, but down to DeBar. Again, we haven't finalized the design that, that far to get to that point.
And is there some reason why a cul-de-sac end point off of 12th, if that winds up turning into a dead end, wouldn't be appropriate for this development?
To have a turnaround? I guess we'll have to look at, before we really finalize site design, we certainly don't want people pulling in there and not having space to turn around.
Okay. Thank you. Do, does that raise any other questions from other board members? Thank you. You have seven minutes and 32 seconds for rebuttal. Are there any other members from the public who wish to speak on this matter tonight? You're, you're part of the petitioner's group?
Yes.
Okay.
My name is Joel Fuller with Arctic Corp, and regarding this brief discussion that's gone on about the turnaround.
One second, before you start, we're going to set the time for you again.
Yes.
Okay.
Going forward, we don't know exactly how that may be impacted. 12th itself has been a street that's been developed over the last 50 or 60 years, is fully developed, and has no turnaround there now, and it has, the issue has not been a problem with any of the public there. This is also on the opposite side of the property from where the request for the vacation of the easement is, so it's kind of unrelated. But yes, ultimately, our, our plan will be primary access off of DeBar for especially the commercial side of the development, and to the back, to the old roller rink, because that's what this is, the old roller rink, and converting it to a storage use for the neighborhood.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Does the petitioner have any other parties that they're wanting to speak on this?
Well, I'm, I'm a neighbor in that same area, Northeast Community Council. I live less than a mile away, but I'm also part of the petitioner. Go ahead. Yes, but I'm not, I'm going to talk as a citizen, not the petitioner.
Thank you.
Okay. A little background, I'd like to say.
Can I get you to state your name?
Ken Fuller, 6701 Pickwick Place, Anchorage, Alaska. Lived there since 1983. What's he shaking his head about?
They got the Fuller part, and I think they missed the first part.
Ken, J. Fuller.
Got it.
Spent a few years over here. I see two leftovers from my era.
Right.
Anyway, been out there since 83, lived less than a mile from the roller rink, and a couple of years ago, as one of our rezone apps, I spoke to over 100 citizens in that 500-foot radius of the property, specifically on access and, and protection and security, and substantially, I had over 100 signatures of people who supported this development. And a little history on that little jog of St. Michael's Street, which Mike Adams was a developer, and as he sold off chunks, Taj Udeen was a five-acre site, which is directly the condos to the north of us. He restricted access to that easement, even though it was their property. Okay, so above the, above our parcel is about 400 feet, that's actually Taj Udeen's property. But they can't use it. They can't access it. They can't use it for traffic, for snowplow or anything. And then as he sold off the subdivision on the west side, those people were also restricted from any access to that easement. The Edward Street, the construction yard to the north of, Bentory subdivision, to the north of them, he also, when he sold that piece off, restricted access to this, this easement. So he really designed the easement for himself, and as he, as he backed out of selling them, he was restricted. Even the ones next door to us, the Russian Jack Plaza, are restricted from access to this easement, even though they use it. Okay? Anyway, so what happens is Taj Udeen will be able to get access back to that, about three-quarters of an acre for their, for their use, which they cannot do until we vacate that easement. And it really is a collection point for people driving in and dumping trash out and homeless traffic and casual trespass all around, so the whole community is, is strongly supportive of, of us developing that, restricting it, and, and giving that back to Taj Udeen. So I just hope that you guys can find approval in this. Any questions?
Any questions from the board? None. Thank you, Ken Fuller. Are there any other members of? Are there any other members of the public that wish to speak on this matter tonight? Seeing and hearing none, you have six minutes and 44 seconds for rebuttal. And I don't see there having been no opposition that the petitioner has any rebuttal. So with that, the matter now rests with the board. They have a motion to approve the subdivision of one tract into and the vacation of the 60-foot public use easement. Kevin Cross, would you please state your motion?
Yes, regarding case S12615, Adamsville subdivision tract 1A, I move to approve the request for a vacation of a 60-foot public easement on the western property boundary of tract A1 dedicated per plat 85-95, subject to one, recorded in a suitable plat within 24 months of its approval and any other additional time extensions.
Thank you. And Ballard Ritz has seconded your motion. Kevin, did you want to speak to your motion?
Yeah, it's, you know, as far as the access is why we're eliminating this public use easement, I think the maps on, of course, not only just the plat that received, but as well as the maps that are available on 20 and 21 pretty much explain what's going on. You can see the public use easement on the west side of the property. You can see where it's been dedicated. But in order to do a replat or, you know, we've got access either off 12 or DeBarre, which is the future intent. So we can see where originally the plat, it no longer functions the way it was originally designed. Additionally, I think it's important to note that 433 public hearing notices were mailed out on June 16th, and there were no... There's no public testimony giving negative. Neither do we have anything in our packet that the Northwest Community Council had any objections to this. And finally, under staff analysis, there are six criteria of which an individual must qualify in order to be considered for a vacation of a public rightway. And the petitioner's met all six.
Thank you. Are there any other board members who wish to make any findings? Seeing and hearing none, we'll call the vote. And it looks like the motion has passed unanimously. We'll next turn our attention to... Oh, there's a second motion you want?
Yeah, we have a second.
All right. Let's have a second motion. They have a motion to approve the plat for 24 months, subject to the following conditions. One. Two, as in resolve with the private development, a 50-foot radius temporary turnaround easement at 12th. Item three, four, five, six. And a second six, we'll renumber that as seven, A and B. Kevin Cross, would you like to state your motion?
Regarding case S12615, Adamsville subdivision tract A1, I move to approve the plat for 24 months, subject to the following conditions. Conditions, one. Condition, two, to be amended to state resolve with private development the need for a 50-foot radius temporary turnaround easement at East 12th Avenue. Three, four, five, six, and then six, the second six, corrected to be number seven, and number seven, seven A and seven B.
Thank you. And Jenna Wilson has seconded your motion. Did you want to speak to your motion?
I just want to revert back to what I stated in the official approval under department recommendation A. Again, the six criteria that were met, the public notices, of which there was no negative comment, as well as the maps on 20 and 21 that give further detail of how the original plat is not quite suitable for the future intended purpose.
Thank you. Are there any other board members who wish to make any findings? I guess I'd make the additional finding that we did hear testimony that the petitioner believes that it's possible that they don't need to have a temporary turnaround. I think that by having a resolve condition on there, that's something that he can establish with the planning department and that may also be implicated by what kind of development he has, what the owner winds up creating here. And so there is a possibility, depending on how it's developed, that a turnaround at the end of 12th is needed. And that's why I'm in support of the amendment that's been proposed. And I think that that is at least a motion movement halfway on the city's part by removing the requirement to dedicate. But I'm not comfortable retaining at least the obligation to resolve with municipality on that issue. Does that raise any other findings for anybody? With that, we'll call the vote. And the motion has passed unanimously. Next, we'll turn our attention to case S12623, Wood River Park Investment Group LLC. And we have petitioner staff's presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Before us is the Huffman Commons subdivision commercial tract fragment lot site plan review. So this is a preliminary plat and site plan request to subdivide. It's going to subdivide two tracts of land into one tract and also create three commercial fragment lots. That's why you see there's a two-part approval there. So this request is being made to accommodate the redevelopment of an existing drive-through restaurant building and to create three fragment lots, two of which are for future development. The property is zoned I1 Light Industrial District, and the underlying tract one meets the minimum lot size and width required by the I1 zoning district. Fragment lot one is currently developed, and the site plan shows a future drive-through building on fragment lot two and a small building on fragment lot three. For the streets, the Huffman Road is currently dedicated to a width of 80 feet, which meets the official Streets and Highways Plan standard. Abutting the west and north petition site boundary way, Industry Way and Huffman Park Drive is designated as a local road requiring 60 feet of rideaway. AMC 2103 200E requires a commercial tract site plan to show building footprints, parking areas, landscaping, driveway access to the property, site drainage, and proposed declarations, covenants, and restrictions on the property as a commercial tract. Staff is requesting the condition of approval to provide a copy of the declarations, covenants, and restrictions in the commercial tract fragment lot site plans. Common access easements are addressed in the declarations and the covenants, not on the site plan, however.
I would like to interrupt you for just a moment. As a point of order, I would like to go back to disclosures.
Oh, okay.
I have a board member who needs to make a disclosure on this matter.
I apologize. I should have caught this earlier, but I didn't catch the name of the company because I only represent one of the members of the company. So I need to recuse myself from this case.
Okay. Did you... That's fine. They have a motion directing Jenna Wilson to participate in case S12623.
A couple of questions for Jenna. Do you have a financial interest in this project?
No, I'm the lawyer for one of the members, and I'm going to be working on future development of this property.
So she will have an economic interest?
Okay, so you do have a financial interest in this. All right, thank you.
I have no ownership interest, but financially would benefit from this going through.
All right.
I apologize.
I move.
Thank you. Okay. Kevin has moved to direct Jenna Wilson to participate in the matter. I don't think he'll be supporting it.
Nope, I will not, because she has direct financial relationship with the petitioner that's directly tied to this. So I will not be supporting my motion.
And do I have a second for the motion on the floor?
I'll second the motion.
Thank you. And the motion has been seconded electronically by Ballard Ritz almost at the same time you stated that.
She want to leave while we discuss? And I guess my next question is, do we have enough?
Do we have any other findings anyone wants to make on the motion on the floor? We'll go ahead and call the vote on this issue. A no vote will direct her to recuse herself from this matter. A yes vote will direct her to participate. And the motion has failed. Jenna Wilson, you're directed to not participate in this matter, and you should recuse yourself and come back after this one.
Thank you, and I apologize for the distraction.
That's okay. Thank you for... And with that, we'll, as soon as she's out of the room, we'll let you continue. And before I have you continue on that, with the loss of one of our board members, I need to give the short board instructions and opportunity to the petitioner. The plating board policy regarding postponement of public hearing applications. When there is a short board, we have only five members. A postponement is offered to and agreed to by the petitioner, then they will be moved to the next regular agenda. This will occur within 30 days, which does not require renoticing the case or a new public hearing. And if the petitioner is willing to postpone but not is unable to attend the next available meeting within 30 days, they have given a one-time-only option to choose the next date certain they can attend at no extra fee. When a postponement is requested by the petitioner, there is a rescheduling fee under Anchorage Municipal Code 212007A. And a new public hearing date shall be determined by the planning division. That will put their case in the next available cutoff date queue as if they were submitting their case for the first time. With that, does the petitioner wish to avail themselves of the short board postponement?
We'd like to continue tonight with the case.
Thank you. And can you state your name? Are you the petitioner?
I'm the petitioner's representative, Grant Matthews, M.A.T.H.E.W.S. with Triad Engineering.
Thank you, Grant. And with that, we can now return to the staff's presentation. Does anyone on the board wish that he starts from the beginning again? I think I forgot what you said. So if you could start from the beginning again.
Sure, I can start from the beginning. Okay, Mr. Chair. So this is a preliminary plat and site plan request to subdivide two tracts of land into one tract and to create three commercial fragment lots. So as I mentioned, the request is being made to accommodate the redevelopment of an existing drive-through and to create three total fragment lots. The property is zoned I1, and it meets the minimum lot size standards for that. Huffman Road is 80 feet, which meets the OSHMP. The abutting streets are local roads with 60 feet of rideaway. Staff has made a condition of approval to provide a copy of the declarations, covenants, and restrictions. And I was just, at the time, discussing the common access easement. So the underlying plat 98119 dedicated a 24-foot common access easement that you can see on the site plan plat is north, south, east, west. And staff is requesting a condition to carry forward on this proposed plat the same dedicated 24-foot common access easement. So it's basically just going to provide the same 24-foot common access easements that existed on the previous plat. No change. There is attached sidewalk along Huffman Road, so no improvements are required there. However, private development has requested construction of an attached five-foot sidewalk along Industry Way and along Huffman Park Drive. So planning has placed this as a condition of final plat approval. And those sidewalks will be a much-needed benefit improvement. The traffic engineering department commented that the community and traffic department have concerns about impacts that the proposed commercial development may have. So the proposed development may be approaching threshold required for a traffic impact analysis for the area. And traffic would like to see a trip generation study prior to the final plat approval. So staff has requested this as a condition as well. So what we're seeing tonight is a plat to combine to two into one tract and then also the commercial tract fragment lot site plan, which planning has recommended approval. So we can see that there as A1 through seven on the staff report. I can answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you. Does the board have any questions for staff? Seeing and hearing none, do we have a petitioner's representative present?
And I do believe we may also have someone on the phone as well, in addition to Grant.
Thank you.
Yeah, so my name is Grant Matthews again through the chair. We also have Tony Hoffman with the Boutique Company on the phone. I can give a quick introduction and then let him take the rest. So yeah, I'd just like to say thanks to staff for their work on this. As Sean mentioned, we're combining two properties into one and then subdividing into three tracts with a commercial frag lot site plan shown on page 18 of the staff packet. We're working with some existing constraints. As Sean mentioned, the shared access easements on the east and then the one that dissects the proposed tract one and tract two, and then also the existing fast food restaurant. We agree with all the department recommendations for the conditions. We'll be adding sidewalks along Industry Way and Huffman Park Drive, which will be a nice pedestrian benefit. I know there were some concerns raised from public testimony about traffic, and the traffic department has requested a traffic study be completed. We have no objection to that. And also, the pedestrian amenities will be a benefit there. I can also speak more to the actual traffic counts that we're seeing in the surrounding roads. And then, Tony, if you have anything else to add, I'll let you take the helm.
Good evening. My name is Tony Hoffman with the Boutique Company. Can you hear me?
I hear you just fine, Tony Hoffman.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, Grant has pretty much covered everything. It is a fragment lot site plan plat that we're doing. We haven't done many of these lately. There's quite a few existing around Anchorage, of course, to Cottine, University Center, Diamond Mall is a big one. So this is a smaller-scale fragment lot kind of plat, but it still achieves the same type of end in that they have their shared amenities, shared access agreements, and other things that are difficult to accomplish with a conventional P Lot plat. Other than that, we did meet with the community council twice. One time, well, we didn't meet with them, it was a Zoom meeting. But the first time, we introduced the concept, and we didn't have the final design. The second meeting, we did, and we, again, discussed it. And of course, the biggest concern, it seems, is the traffic impacts. And I would point out that the area is zoned I1, and what we are putting in is going to be, it may not... It's going to be a lighter type of impact, although there may be more generation from retail. generation from retail stores, which is what we're, we're talking about, retail, and then the Sonic that's going in on Huffman. But it's not going to be heavy industrial. It's not going to be really industrial in all its business, retail. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that Staff has, or Grant can answer any engineering question.
Thank you. Kevin Cross, do you have a question?
Yeah, I have a que, I have a question. We recognize, and I think we're all familiar with what happened in Wasilla when they opened that one and the traffic that was generated. I guess my thought is, why is there a thought that this will be less impact?
Well, you know, from an anecdotal type of scenario, when we, when they opened Sonic in, in Wasilla at the Sun, what, the Sun, Sun Mountain Center or Sun Mountain Plaza, it, people were driving by when they saw the sign. They were coming in months ahead of the construction end, and in this, in this particular store, while we're building it, you know, the sign went up two weeks ago, and there hasn't been a single person drive by and ask about it. So I, I don't really know how to answer the problems or the questions of a, a drive-through when they first opened. I mean, it happens, it happened probably at Carl's Jr. when they opened it at the same site 15 years ago, but it's, 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 the, the layout for, for the Sonic does provide extra, some extra traffic flow in that they're doubling the lanes that come in through the drive-through. Other than that, I, it's hard for me to really speak much to traffic queuing or how the impacts are going to, to be. We just can't anticipate that. It's, it's kind of a fickle time right now.
I can add to that, to Tony. Yeah, I think that, I mean, it is a real concern when a new fast food restaurant, especially in town, opens, tends to get a bunch of traffic. But I think the fact is, if we designed to kind of the first opening salvo of traffic, you know, Anchorage would look like just an entire asphalt parking lot. So we, we have certain standards we design to in terms of traffic loading and then parking requirements as well. This site as a whole is actually overparked. We have additional parking than is what required by Title 21. As Tony mentioned, we are providing two drive-through queuing lanes to try to mitigate some of that backup that will inevitably happen at the early phases of development. The other thing I'd point out on the site plan on page 18, we do have three points of ingress and egress to surrounding roads with this development. We have access onto Industry, Industry Way, Huffman Park Drive to the north, and then also to, to Huffman Road. So it's not like, you know, someone can only come in and out one way for the development as a whole.
Do we have any other questions for the petitioners? Seeing and hearing none, it looks like you guys have 6 minutes and 53 seconds for rebuttal. Do we have any members of the public here in the room with us that wish to speak? Seeing and hearing none. Do we have any that are on the call list? We have none on the call list. And with that, you can now use some of your time in rebuttal. And to help you out, there is one person who wrote in on page 50 of the staff's packet that is attempting to vote no on this project. Did you want to address that at all?
Yeah, I mean, I think the, this is Grant, again, through the chair. Again, traffic has been the, the greatest concern raised from public input through the process. And I guess one, one other thing I'd note, Huffman Road is classified as a minor arterial. That standard is built to 10,000 to 20,000 average daily trips, and the current traffic data from this past year, well, actually, and 2019 to 2020 was kind of an anomaly, obviously, but it, it falls about at 11,000 average daily trips. So, I mean, we're, you know, barely above the, the minimum standard of what this road is designed to. So I know people are concerned about traffic loading, but the reality of it is, this, this proposed development won't, won't have, won't be a drop in the bucket on, in terms of the surrounding roads and what they're designed to, to handle.
Thank you. Does that raise any other questions for, from the board? Did you have anything else that you wanted to add? I guess you weren't necessarily answering a question. You were getting to use your rebuttal time. So you still have... Okay?
Yeah, nothing else to add. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Then with that, the matter, Kevin Cross, do you have a question?
I just want to make sure everybody, did everybody read the July 28th letter that came in late? That was the, the email that we received, and I think it was in the staff packet. Just want to make sure that we discuss that maybe a little bit before we can discuss it after we vote. But just want to make sure everybody's had a chance to review that. That's the letter by Bree Kiefer and Colin Agni. It looks like they represent Car and Family Properties. And their recommendation, just to make sure if you don't have it, you can see it, is that they're, they're requesting that the following be added to condition number two, which is resolved with Traffic Department, any concerns the department has related to site layouts and traffic impacts of the right-of-way and common access easement. They just want to make sure that there you have some participation in that, since it looks like the access and entrance to the Sonic directly affects the access to the businesses across the street. I think, however, that if they do a Traffic Department, I guess we'll, we'll discuss that, so.
Well, would you read that?
Yeah, I've got it right here.
I would like to ask a question of petitioner representative regarding this letter. Grant Matthews, did you receive a copy of the letter laid on the table for us dated July 28th by Bree Kiefer and Colin Agni?
I don't believe we did. Tony, did we?
I have a copy of it here, if you'd like.
I did not. I have not seen it.
Yeah, I think that, I mean, honestly, that they're basically requesting that the Traffic Department, I don't, I don't think this condition is necessary, but I think it's because, basically, it's already worked into just the general process of the, the building permit and what will, and, you know, what we're, what we're doing here. I mean, you know, Traffic had their chance to review this, and they've requested a, a traffic study be done. Really, that depends on the actual uses that get incorporated into this development. But in general, I mean, the common access easements are maintained with this development. The, the, you know, the Sonic is going from an existing drive-through restaurant to a new drive-through restaurant. I mean, admittedly, it's a, you know, a new restaurant, but it's the same use that it, that it always has been. And I guess I don't think that that condition would be necessary. Tony, I guess you, you aren't even able to see it, are you?
No, but from what was read, it doesn't sound like, it's, it's incorporated into the subdivision development plan process, it seems like. These Traffic's going to re-review it again when, they're reviewing it now for the plat, the permit, aren't they?
Yeah, I mean, we're currently in for a master filling grade permit for the site that's just allowed by right without the plating action. You can build, you know, multiple buildings on a, on a single lot. So I guess I'm, I'm confused as to what benefit it would add, but that's, that's kind of my two cents.
Thank you.
Through the chair, this is Sean with the planning staff.
Yes, Sean.
So I have a que, or I can kind of talk to it with Mr. and maybe Grant here. So we read the letter, and it says they support the condition two, to provide a trip generation study, and that they're, they're requesting resolve with Track of Department any concerns that the department has related to the impacts, which would come at kind of, in twofold, kind of come out of that trip generation study. So as Grant said, it's, it's handled through the conditions we have in the staff packet. And they're, they're tract N-1 with the existing 24-foot common access easements. That's what that was created for, was both tract N-1, and then these, these lot, tract as well. So all that is being carried forward, and they're still going to have access. And if any concerns do come up in the trip generation study, then definitely Traffic is going to speak to the petitioner about it. But as we heard from Grant, it sounds like the numbers are way lower than that.
And if I heard correctly, this was previously used as a fast food restaurant. We're just changing?
Correct. There's a, there's kind of a collision here, so it is. We're under a plating action, however, we also have this existing fast, or, yeah, existing fast food restaurant to a new fast food restaurant taking place. You know, that could, that could, the Sonic could happen whether there's a plating action or not. They're in here to request for three fragment lots. It just happens to be that at the same time, they're remodeling a fast food restaurant to a different fast food restaurant.
That's, that's what I understood. Thanks.
Yeah, that's, I guess, an important thing to note, Sean. Thanks for adding that in, is the, the remodel of the Sonic has already been approved through the, you know, the building permit process. Used to be a Carl's Jr., but that's already been approved and is underway.
Thank you. Does that raise any other questions? And are, have you used all of your rebuttal time? I mean, I have 6 minutes 53 seconds on here.
I think we're good, unless you have any other questions.
Thank you. Then with that, the matter will now rest with the board. May I have a motion to approve the commercial tract for 24 months, subject to conditions 1 through 7?
In regards to case S-12623, Commercial Tract Fragment Lot Site Plan Review of Huffman Common Subdivision Tract One Fragment Lots 1 through 3. I move to approve the Commercial Tract Plat, excuse me, the Commercial Tract Plat and Site Plan for 24 months, subject to the following conditions. Conditions 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 5A, B, C, D, and E, 6 and 7, 7A, and 7A 1, 2, 3, and 4.
Thank you. And Don Porter has seconded your motion. Did you want to speak to your motion?
Yes, you know, we've got a lot of information here. Ultimately, the, the largest opposition to what's taking place here all falls along traffic. I think we can all agree with that. I'm not here to, it's a fast food restaurant that's still going to be a fast food restaurant. I think that's critical. I think that if there is a, a sudden significant increase that's causing the, a majority of the heartburn, it'll acquiesce after the novelty of its opening transcends, and it'll go back to being what is additionally a fast food restaurant. I think, so looking at the plat, I think that they've made some good improvements as far as improving the flow, doubling up the carpool, and doubling up the lanes for the, for the drive-through. And then additionally, that there will be a pretty comprehensive traffic study that's going to be done. They're going to have to resolve that, and of course, the public can weigh in with their objections, concerns, and heartburn with the Traffic Department at that time, as they're going through getting their approval and they're doing the traffic study. So I think in all, that's a, it's a benefit to the area. I think that, I think it'll be an excellent development when, when completed. I'll be voting for it.
Thank you. Are there any other findings the board would like to make? I'm in agreement also with Kevin on the findings he's made, and I'm also pleased that they're putting in sidewalks, which ought to help address some of the issue with children that are in the neighborhood and will likely want to go to this particular restaurant. And with that, is there any other findings? Seeing and hearing none, we'll call the vote.
Okay, Mr. Chair, would you like me to start with the staff presentation?
Thank you. Janet Welton has now returned to participate in case S-12601, APU Campus Tracks A and B. And we have staff's presentation.
Thank you. So this is a request to subdivide three parcels into two tracts of land with a variance from improvement requirements by improvement area, and specifically for the requirement to provide a paved street to municipal standards for an existing gravel gated maintenance road. The maintenance road accesses under Northern Lights Boulevard, and there is a paved apron. Historically, APU and MLP have coexisted on the unsubdivided parcels as part of a lease agreement. However, with the sale of MLP to Chugash Electric, it is now necessary to create the proposed tracts to align with real property that will be transferred. The plat will create the two tracts of land to allow for the transfer, and the current uses for the tracts will continue as what they are now. The proposed subdivision meets the requirements of the PLI zoning district, and there are no objections by reviewing agencies to this plated action. Road improvements and dedication, the service access road was established to provide maintenance to the MLP and the Clutina purchasers' electrical substation facilities. The access road is gated and within a 33-foot section line roadway reserve easement. There's actually two 33-foot section line easements along that portion. The approach apron to Northern Lights is paved, and as a result, no improvements are recommended at this time. Conformance with the adopted plans, this preliminary plat appears to conform with the petition site's classification, as shown in the 2040 Land Use Plan map, specifically Infrastructure Land Use Policy 5.1 and 5.5. The property exchange results in no loss of utility infrastructure, and the subdivision will ensure that the public facilities are located on their own tracts and allow for future growth of both facilities. In the matter of the variance standards to the paving, as the applicant states, condition A has been met. The existing gated gravel maintenance road extends across the 33-foot section line, and it has a paved apron to prevent tracking of dirt. And strip paving, this small segment of road, only serves two existing substations, and is not meant for and is not meant for public access would be impractical, unreasonable, and undesirable to the general public. Staff finds condition B has been met. The access road has been placed since the 1970s and the character and use will remain in place. The neighboring properties and trail users of Chester Creek Trail will not see any visual change from the existing conditions currently on the parcels. This would not result in a situation that is detrimental to the public welfare. Staff finds condition C has been met. The variance would not nullify the intent of the subdivision regulations or the comprehensive plan. The gated access road does not serve the general public and allows maintenance vehicles access to the electrical substations while providing for safe, efficient, and convenient movement. It does not conflict with any provisions of the comp plan and the variance would support infrastructure land use policies. Staff finds condition D has been met. Let's see here. Given the special circumstances identified above in standard A, compliance with the requirement to pave and improve this segment of the access road, it would result in undue hardship by creating unnecessary construction and maintenance expenses. If the maintenance road is required to be upgraded to municipal standards, it would require removing natural vegetation to widen and pave the existing gravel road and this would change the character of the surrounding area, which could have negative impacts on trail users and surrounding properties. Natural vegetation screens the roadway and facilities, which is desirable to the surrounding properties and trail users. Taking these circumstances into account, it is considered by the department that strict compliance with the special provisions of the subdivision would represent an undue hardship for the petitioner and would be contrary to the interests of the municipality. With that, staff finds that those standards have been met and recommends approval of condition A, A1, B1, and 2, found on the staff packet of page seven, for the, for this, the variance and the plating action. I can answer any questions that you may have.
The requirement in B1 to resolve the utility easements, I presume, is primarily resolving the instar easement issue on page 64?
That is correct. Yeah, the plat will have to have all the utility agencies sign off.
Thank you. Does the board have any other questions? Seeing and hearing none, we'll take petitioner's representative. Oh, we have another question. Jana?
Sean, I'm sure I'm just missing it, but I actually don't see a signature on this application.
Oh, on the application? Well, let's take a look here. Okay, there's no signature, but the representative box is checked and I believe we do have a petitioner's representative. Let's take a look here. I believe that's on page 22 is the letter of authorization.
Okay, thank you. That is helpful. I just wanted to make sure we had that.
And we, one of the planning board members may have the actual signed application. Sometimes when these come in, we, we get, well, now it's down to 16, but we may sign the wrong one and send it out.
Okay, yeah, no problem. As long as you're comfortable with it, I'm comfortable.
We have the petitioner's representative?
Good evening. My name is Lakita Chmalowski. I am the Land Use Planning Manager at Dow and I'm here tonight representing the petitioner APU for the tract A and B, APU Campus Subdivision. So as staff mentioned, or I guess backing up, I'd like to reserve my remaining time for rebuttal. We take no exceptions to the conditions that are presented in the staff packet. As staff mentioned, this project is really subdividing what is now the APU campus. It's an unsubdivided parcel to create the parcel up in the northeast corner for the MLP substation, which has been located there since the 1970s as part of a lease agreement. So as they mentioned, that's what's triggering this plat. We did talk a little bit about the roadway variance and so that's being requested because that maintenance road's been there since the 70s, serving the MLP substation and the Acclutina purchaser's substation, which is just to the east. It is gated. It's not meant for public access. So this is just the preliminary plat that you have in your application and creating that, that smaller piece up in the northeast corner for MLP and then the larger parcel for APU's campus. And with that, I can answer any questions.
Thank you. Does the board have any questions for Lakita Chalowski? Lakita?
Correct.
Doesn't look like there are any questions for you. So you have eight minutes and 18 seconds for rebuttal. And do we have any people on a phone list to be called?
Through the chair, do we want to do the phone list first or do we have, I believe we have members of the public here?
We have a member of the public standing and ready, so we will take them first. Middle button, it's one to the face and three lines coming out of the face.
Okay.
And you can move that down so it's comfortable and now you'll make a good record.
My name is, ooh, it's, my name is Elizabeth Blair. I live at 3538 Wesleyan Drive, which backs up into the Chester Creek Trail and to the APU property. I don't have any objections to that little piece belonging to being transferred because of the sale of APU to Chugash Electric. I walk that area most every day. My concern is it's more of a question, seek information, this Lakita Chmalowski, good to meet you, put a face to a name. How does that relate to the Alaska Native Tribal Health Consortium and being involved in this sale? And that's, and the project and the stuff that was submitted to me, has that? Could I ask that question?
Yeah, but you can inform us and perhaps we will ask that when we get to her. And that was the Native Health Consortium?
The Alaska Native Tribal Health Consortium, A-N-T-C-H-C. It just makes me think that there's something else going on that we don't know that's simmering.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other members of the public that wish to speak this evening? You may come forward, sir. Your microphone's already on?
Hope you can hear me okay. Good evening. My name is Stephen Paliwoda and I live at 3301 Wesleyan Drive, which is the primary residential street which parallels the east side of the university property. I am here tonight only because I knew that there was some action ongoing with regard to the university property and so I came on down to see what it was. By the way, I've been a resident of Anchorage since 1976. I have worked as a licensed architect in Anchorage since that time. The last 20 years that I was working, I was with the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers as an architect. And the last dozen years, I was the lead architect in the state of Alaska for the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers, the so-called Arctic Design Expert Worldwide. I've taken a quick look at this document and it seems to be pro forma action, which I doubt that any of my fellow residents could have an objection to. It seems to be a rational and appropriate action. The people along Wesleyan Drive, as you can imagine, love the wonderful open space which constitutes that part of APU. We all know that eventually, as the decades pass, that there will ultimately be construction there, which will be part of APU's master plan. But for now, it seems that what is being contemplated is entirely appropriate and I doubt, again, that few of my fellow residents would have any objection to it. I make these statements only so that you can know and the record can show that there was public input to this minor action. I have no objection to it. Thank you for your time.
Before you go, can we get you to spell your last name?
Pardon?
For the record, would you please spell your last name?
Last name? I say humorously speaking, that's a Ukrainian name. When I was a student at Cal Berkeley and I told people that it was a Ukrainian name, everyone asked, where the heck is the Ukraine? Well, now I don't have to go through that.
Thank you, sir. Do we have any other members of the public on this matter? With that, we'll bring up the petitioner's representative for rebuttal.
Through the chair, I believe we have a person to call here.
Sorry, we have someone? Go ahead.
Hello, Seth?
Hello, is this Seth Weingarten?
Yes.
This is the plating board calling for public testimony on case S-12609, Alaska Public University Subdivision. Are you testifying as an individual?
I am.
Oh, you will have three minutes to provide your testimony. Please state your full name for the record and you can begin now with your testimony.
Okay. You broke up a little bit there, but my name is Seth Weingarten.
You may go ahead. Yes, thank you.
Ah, well, yes, so calling and appreciate you taking the call. It's just in support of keeping the woods and open space intact there and speaking on behalf of many of the different neighbors and community members who use that area as open space and heat in different parts of the day. I think that it adds a lot to the community value and it would be a shame to let that little pocket there of town get filled in and developed with, with more pavement and buildings that we, we wouldn't be able to reclaim that area. So just wanted to speak in favor of keeping that as open space and not let that be overdeveloped and let more traffic and buildings through there.
Thank you.
I appreciate your time.
Thank you, sir. And does the board have any questions for Seth? Mr. Weingarten, we don't have any other questions for you, but thank you for calling in.
All right, you're welcome.
And I think that is the end of our public testimony. No more to call in and no one left in the room, so now we'll take you on rebuttal.
Thank you. I guess just along those lines, this plat and with the variance would keep that area looking the same as it does today. That is one of the reasons we requested the variance, so we didn't have to do roadway upgrades. And to answer one of the questions by a member of the public about A-N-T-H-C's involvement, APU was part of a purchase, so A-N-T-H-C, APU, and South Central Foundation all fall under the same umbrella now. And so A-N-T-H-C helps assist APU in these sorts of processes, but in your packet is the letter of authorization from APU, who is the underlying property owner.
Thank you. And do you know whether or not the application was signed by, it looks like the representative box was checked, so did you sign that?
I did provide a signed copy, yes.
Okay. And that's fine. We'll let the record reflect that the signed copy has been received and you were the one who signed it.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thanks.
With that, do we have any other questions? I see another question. Jana?
Can you just clarify a little bit more about what you meant about A-N-T-H-C and APU and South Central being under the same umbrella?
Yeah, so APU, APU is a private college that was purchased by a group that, like a native group that has all those agencies under the same umbrella. So A-N-T-H-C, South Central Foundation, APU, all are part of one group.
Okay. I don't actually think that's correct. I think it's A-N-T-H-C and South Central do a joint operating agreement to do the medical, native medical facility and then they have an operating agreement with APU. So just, I just, I don't think that is exactly correct, the way that it's described, but I guess the concept is there. I was just trying to give the member of the public a little bit more clarity.
Sure.
They're at least doing the real estate together.
That is my understanding.
Okay. Any further questions? Seeing and hearing none, the matter now rests with the board. May I have a motion in case S-21609 for approval of the requested variance from the requirement to provide paved street improvements? Kevin Cross, you may state your motion.
Regarding case S-12609, I move to approve the requested variance from the requirement to provide paved street improvements in AMC 21.08.050C. Improvement requirements for the segment of access road from Northern Lights Boulevard to track B, subject to one, recording a suitable plat within 24 months of preliminary plat approval and any time extensions.
Thank you. And your motion has been seconded by Don Porter. Did you want to speak to your motion?
Yes. The largest concern that the members of the public have and anybody who uses that space regularly is that it's, it's, it's green space and its rugged qualities are maintained. This variance allows them to maintain that. I think that's the main point of this, is that they're trying to keep something looking attractive and not having to do all the road improvements that would require, which would perhaps even have sidewalk curb and gutter or whatever. We've seen how extensive those requirements can be on developments. So this variance is in the best interest of the public. It's my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you. And do we have any other findings that the board would like to make? Seeing and hearing none, we'll call the vote. The motion has passed unanimously and we will now look to a motion to approve the plat for 24 months, subject to the following conditions. Don Porter, would you like to state your motion?
Yes. I move for the approval of the plat for 24 months, subject to the following conditions, one, two, and two A and two B.
Thank you. And Kevin Cross has seconded your motion. Did you want to speak to your motion?
Yes. Pursuant to the discussions we've already had, this simply adds in the requirements of the municipality of Anchorage for drainage and it's completely consistent with the process.
Thank you. Are there any additional findings anyone would like to offer? Seeing and hearing none, we'll call the vote. And the motion has passed unanimously. That gets us to the end of new business. Are there any persons to be heard this evening?